I'm going to call this meeting a scary intro. I would like to start with a pleasurable lead. Good allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're starting here. We're having actually two public hearings, first of which is to start at 5:00. I'll read the notice. The town of Littleton Board of Selectmen proposes to sell land identified as Mount Eustace Road, parentheses, cats map 99 lot 46 to the Littleton Industrial Development Corporation for Dollar. The land at Mount Eustace Road is a 41.96 acre parcel with a 60-foot layaway access to Mount Eustace Road on land owned by the town, which the town's transfer station is located on. The sale carries no cost to the town. The second public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 14th, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. at the Littleton Community Center Heald Room. The Board of Selectmen were authorized by Article 17 on the March 11, 2014 town meeting vote as shown below and that's up on the screen. A bit of an explanation of why we're here again. As you know, we started this process late spring, early summer. Went through a first of two public hearings, had input from the planning board, had input from the conservation board, and then we received a petition from some of the butters that stopped the process. Since that time, the town has retained town council, and town council has a different opinion as to how the process should go and what's proper and what's not. Therefore, we are proceeding with the hearing process again. However, we're starting all over again. So anything that you may have said before, don't assume that we know. You're welcome to say it again. As a matter of fact, we probably haven't forgotten, but you need to say it to get it in the record because the record is what we will use to make our decision. As I said, there'll be a second public hearing, and then there will be a third meeting, which will be at a regular selectmen's meeting where we will make a decision. The second hearing, which I will read at 5:30, has to do with the layaway. This hearing, as I read, has to do with the sale of the land. Seal asked you to sign in when you came, and if I could have that list, I will call you off in that order. You do not have to speak. Do you not have to speak when I call your name? You can speak later, but I'm just going to reward those that got here first.
Can you explain more why we're doing this again?
We're doing this because there's a difference in legal opinion. This is the proper way to proceed. The petition that stopped this back in July basically said that we needed to decide this issue at town meeting. The opposing legal opinion says that we can proceed to resolve this in this method by having two public hearings and have the selectmen decide. That's a pretty rough summary from a non-attorney. So the first person to sign up was Mary Edith.
First of all, with the difference of opinion on this, I think you quote RSA 4114A, and in that process, it does say that a petition can be put in to put it on the ballot in March. So my question tonight, since legal counsel is here, is that will that 4114A, since that's what you're quoting here, will that be allowed to happen again? That's my first thing. The second thing is, I think you remember when the Howard property was put on a petition to change the zoning, it was 2015? I'm not sure if it was 2015 or 2016.
15.
15, okay. And there was a juxtaposition of two numbers in the property, correct? And, well, does anybody else remember that?
It was the wrong property.
Right, right. And I don't know that that was the only thing wrong with it, but because of that, I think again you went to town council and got that that article had to be withdrawn. I contend that Article 17 from March 11, 2014 should not, is illegal because, and this is on the website too, it's quoted that the last, well, I can read the whole thing. Shall the Board of Selectmen be authorized without further town meeting action to subsidize, subdivide, exchange, and or sell the following town property, including development rights, after two duly noticed public hearings and consultation with the town planning board and conservation commission in accordance with RSA 4111-48? There is no RSA that exists. You have actually changed that RSA in this folder. That's what the petition says. And then it also, on the location of the property, it states it as map 9917, which I don't believe exists. I think you want it to be 9946. So I contend that that, this is invalid, this one, 2014. And then the other thing is that the vote that we had in 2016 to again sell these properties or give you the authority to do that, I think that would override this one, in personal opinion. As far as the selling is, I'll wait probably a second hearing to talk on that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Mary. And I'll remind you, we are not here to discuss or argue. We're here to listen. And it's clearly an input hearing. What you tell us will be recorded, and it will be part of the decision-making process. I'm not going to get into an argument of what's legal and what's not legal, but it'll all be part of the testimony that we use to make our decision. And if there's still legal issues, then the attorneys will battle it out. So next on the list is Kim, Kim DeLutz.
I would hope that the legal issues, you know, are taken into account before we have to do this all over again. So I understand that you want to hear our input again. I don't know why you would want to, but we'd all have better things to do than to go through this all again. First of all, when the over 50 petitioners are against this sale, this giveaway of land, basically, and you accepted the petition back in July, why would you not contact the petitioner to let him know that we were just, we're just going to forget about the petition and start all over again? You know, if we hadn't seen it on the website that there was a meeting today, you're not engendering any trust with your residents. So that's one point that I have. I'm really starting to feel, as, I mean, you say that you're going to use all our talking points to base your decision on giving this land away, but I really don't believe that. I really don't. Everything that you've done just doesn't coincide with your words. So I'm just not trusting anything that you say right now. The other question I have is, do you plan on eliminating the town, the line between this lot and lot 107, so that you can rezone 107? That's a question that I have. Are you not able to answer that?
Now, at this point, we haven't decided to sell the land.
So when do we get our questions answered?
Yeah.
I mean, I could talk and talk and talk about why, you know, this is a bad idea.
Your basic question of whether or not we're going to proceed with the sale will be answered when we make our decision.
No, I didn't ask that question. I asked when, if you're planning on eliminating the line between this lot 46 and lot 107.
That would be in our decision, which we make. It would be a condition of sale if we decide to sell.
So we don't know until you're going to vote on the sale?
We don't, you won't know until we make the decision.
To sell.
If we decide to sell.
Which I'm pretty sure you will. Okay, so basically, you're saying that our petition is filed 13ed. Is that right?
Is what?
It's just in the trash. Our petition is no longer valid.
Our legal opinion from town council does not agree with the petition.
And that's based on which RSA?
That's a legal question that I'm not, you qualified the answer.
So I won't get that answer either?
I don't know the answer.
So I'm not going to get the answer. Okay. So any of the questions that I have today will not be answered. Is that right? I mean, no.
Well, it's not a question-and-answer session. It's public input.
Okay, so when's the question-and-answer session? There isn't one.
Well, the decision process will be at a regular selectmen's meeting. And the procedure on that is a discussion of the issue, the agenda item which this will be. And then there's a public input session, and then there's a vote.
I hope you realize how unfair the process is because we don't know what's going on. And we're doing everything legally to let you three know how we feel about this. And yet, I just don't know where any of that's going, and now we're doing it all over again.
Well, as an example, your question about the lot line, you've made it clear to me you don't want that. So that makes it clear to me when I'm making my decision, if I decide to sell, that maybe one of the conditions ought to be that there not be a separation. So your question in that form, as I'm taking as a statement as to your wishes, which will be part of at least my consideration, and I presume my colleagues.
So you basically answered my question that you are considering eliminating the lot line.
I am now. You've made it part of the record.
Okay.
Good job.
Well, that was a roundabout way of getting to that answer. You see what I'm saying about engendering trust? I mean, why don't we just answer questions?
Can I say something here?
Yes.
If the decision of the board is to transfer that property, and we simply transfer the property, it will no longer be the board's decision to combine those parcels. The owners would have to submit a request for that. And I don't, I don't know what the processes are because I haven't been through that cycle here yet to get that done, but it won't be, it'll be, at that point, we wouldn't have control over that, or we wouldn't have control of combining them. The town may have control of allowing it or not through the requirements, but I guess that's all I have to say on that.
Yeah, so the sale of this lot for $1, or that's basically a gift. It's not a sale. And I do believe that the petition supersedes that gifting, giving away of the land, according to that Article 4 that everyone voted on. So I really, I don't understand how this is even happening when the voters voted on it. But I remember at, in July, when we were talking about it, and the conservation commission was talking about it, and they, they actually said this was really unbuildable land, and that it was like the flume. There was a cave in there, there's a lot of wetlands. So why any business would want to build on that land? I can't imagine the cost and also, you know, the destruction of wildlife. So, you know, there are so many other things we could do with it. And I'm thinking of little mini flume in Littleton where we could generate income as a destination. I know, also know that there have been offers put on the land for sizable income, why we would give it away for a dollar, especially when I, well, I should ask this question. Is there a lease in line? Like, is there a business coming in? Do we know, you know, the potential income that this gift would bring to the town? Is it going to reduce our taxes? I'll let somebody else talk. Thank you.
Thank you. John Scott.
Okay. Same thing, I mean, town can do whatever they want with their land, you know, this town's land. It's a shame what way we could sell that piece of land and buy a new dump truck for the town, or hire a police officer or a fireman for a year, a salary, and reduce our money that way rather than just give the money away. Piece of land that's supposedly not that great for building. That's about it. And we have to, the burn, if we build next to it, the dump's got a burn site, a burn pit there, are we going to have to transport all our burned stuff elsewhere to be burnt? It costs us more money that way, the transportation of our waste. Thanks.
Thank you. Jim McMahon.
Mostly here to listen. Wasn't involved back when the streets looked at the board. Mostly looking to see if the board has looked at how much revenue could be generated, what sort of mitigation could be involved to easy buyers. I think I remember reading there were some scenic issues, view shifts, things like that. Also the impact to the town tax rate. So land may transfer, but it's important after it transfers, who pays for roads, who pays for things like that. So there's been a study, easy builds, so I'm sure you will look at payback if the town does that payment. So mostly here to listen. Let me catch up.
Thank you. Earl.
All right, here's, here's my thoughts. We had these articles that the taxpayers voted to allow the selectmen to develop, subsidize, develop, or sell that land. It was never in the articles to sell it for a dollar. It was never in the articles to sell it to a nonprofit organization that could end up sitting on it for years just looking for some way to help develop it. That, the town people, when they voted for those articles, didn't realize we were going to give that land away and never get any taxes back on it until somebody actually developed it. There's a lot of people voted yes on that, but they're not here now to tell you exactly how they want that yes handled, how they want the no handled. They're not coming in and saying, "We want you to sell it for a dollar. We don't want to pay, we don't want to receive any taxes on it." So those people, you don't, you don't know what they want, but I'm pretty sure they never thought it would be sold for a dollar to a nonprofit organization. But the people that are showing up at these hearings, and I, you know, I hate to say this, but I'm pretty sure you've already made up your mind you're going to sell it. Otherwise, you want to let it go into the warrant article. Okay? The people showing up at these hearings are all basically saying the same thing. It's a bad idea. You had 50 people do a petition. It's a bad idea. So the people that have taken the time to come in and let you hear their thoughts are saying, "This is not a good idea for the town of Littleton." The people who aren't thinking it's a good idea aren't showing up to be part of the process. So when you sit down and make a decision, you've got to sit down and say, "Okay, what are the people that we've talked to and listened to, what is it exactly they want?" And basically, I do not want to sell that property for a dollar to a non-tax nonprofit I think that'd be all right if you're selling for a dollar to LIDC, if LIDC would agree to pay taxes on it as long as they own it. Because what's going to happen is if they don't, if they get it for a dollar and they don't pay taxes when they sell it, they're going to pocket all that money. LIDC is the only one making out here. Because they're going to take that money now, and it's going to become LIDC's money. It's not going to come back in to the town, so the town's going to lose out. And it could be 10 years before that property gets to go for somebody. So the town loses out on a lot of money over this period of time. Money that we could be using for fire trucks, dump trucks, road repairs. You've got millions of dollars of road repairs. If we sell that property for $82,000, there's another $82,000 to put into road repairs. We've got a lot of stuff that needs to be done in this town. So to sell that property for a dollar to a nonprofit is not a good idea. And I, I think the majority of the people that are absolutely coming to you and saying, "Don't do this. We don't want this done. This is a bad idea. And I just want you to know that we're the ones picking these." So if you're, if you're taking public input, you're not getting public input from 800 people that said, "Sell it." You don't know if they want to sell it for a dollar or not. Chances are, probably not. But the people that are coming into the public input are saying this is a bad idea. Okay? That's what I got to say.
Thank you, Earl. Chad Stern.
Thank you. Just wanted to get some stuff on the record as we have to do this over again. A little bit of history about LIDC and industrial park in general. Currently, there's around 1,500 jobs in the industrial park. Over $700,000 a year is paid in property taxes by industrial park businesses. LIDC has an excellent record when it comes to balancing wetlands, mitigation, conservation, and job creation. You know, this is the North Country. We don't have, you know, fields and all kinds of great stuff to just dig in and put stuff. We've had a great, you know, great many challenges putting buildings in, getting everything taken care of, working with the Army Corps of Engineers, the DES, and everybody, and making sure that we can get as many jobs and get those businesses in. And we've had a great record with that. When you look at the overall investment for the community, over the years, the town, town of Littleton and the taxpayers have put in around a million dollars into the industrial park. As a result, that's almost been 300, excuse me, that's almost been $3 million in outside funding grants through EDA and other various organizations to bring money into Littleton for road repairs, for all those utilities, for everything, again resulting in, you know, over $700,000 paid in property taxes this year. So when you talk about a great investment, even though a lot of these properties are, you know, over the years, in previous town meetings have been, you know, sold to LIDC for a dollar, when you look at how much these businesses come in and pay for property taxes, maybe it isn't the next year that a business come in, maybe it's not the year after that. But when those property taxes come in, just for instance, Littleton Coin Company, you know, a great, great employer in the industrial park, they pay over $100,000 a year in taxes. And I think that's something that we need to know about. It's, I mean, you could, you know, the price of this, the sale of the land may be a dollar, but if you can get a business like Littleton Coin Company that has a great community involvement, a great neighbor in paying that type of taxes, it's worth the investment to go forward with that. And just on another couple other notes, right now, when we look at industrial land, you know, I just said how much, how great of investment industrial jobs and businesses are, there really is no other industrial land to build on in this community. There may be a lot of land that's zoned industrial, but whether it's developable is a much different scenario. Yes, this property does pose challenges, and you're not going to develop all, what is it, 41 acres or what, 41.96 acres? No, that's not all going to be developed, but there are portions of it that can be developed. And the portions that can't be can be mitigated through, with conservation easements. LIDC is currently working with state and local officials for solution on the Hitchens Building. That's an ongoing thing, but at the end of the day, we need a long-term solution for the stagnant tax-based, tax-based growth that we're experiencing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Rudy.
Yes. Thank you very much for letting me talk stuff like that. My main concern about this sale, it's taxation. Oh, I heard, you know, a couple gentlemen out here talk about tax, how much tax, how much money this particular lot they were generating, you know, in time, stuff like that. Oh, this is with, you know, the unbelievable reality about the industrial park. I got a list of the year, which, you know, it's 2003 to 2016, the industrial park never generated a much money to let to the tax, to relieve the taxation in Littleton. I got a list of the year. You got one year, which was 2004, that from '29, they went, you know, they went up to the 5. 2005, from 25 went down to 20. 2006, it went to 19, but anyway. To reach 2016, which we paid almost $26,000, you know, and a thousand last year, I believe that people in Littleton, they really start to realize that, yes, the industrial park is good. It's, you know, it's a good view for Littleton, you know, but I don't know nobody that talks about that. The industrial park relieves the taxation in Littleton. It's not because it's a block and what, it's not, you know. But on the other hand, I believe that if your gentleman, you know, give that property away for a dollar, they're going to start to develop that property, stuff like that. It's, the LIDC, unless they're going to take all the responsibility to develop that property, is going to cost us money. It's like a lot of project that you guys have around here, because then you're talking about infrastructure, and, you know, if the town is irresponsible for infrastructure, which is a tax money, you know, they have to stop. I mean, you know, for a dollar, at least I guess our money back to that people who say, you know, like the lady say, you know, if you try to rap say, if you sell it for $8,000, at least you got $8,000. You pay $26, and you sell it for $80, you know, you make some money, crap, you know, the taxpayer. And this is just about taxation. The LIDC, believe me, it's an organization, you know, that, I don't want to use the words that, you know, you know, like, LIDC, it's an organization that they take it for them. It's not for the people in Littleton, for the middle-class people. Because the middle-class people, they never get. Because the middle-class people, they never get anything from LIDC, nothing at all. And we can go on paper for the record. And another thing that I ask, you know, you three gentlemen, I hope it goes a way, that next meeting, or when you guys decide, I think the people, they show here what their turn, the town attorney, has got to say, you know, about change of laws and stuff like that. Because I believe that the petition so precedes any law that it's in black and white. That's the way I believe. If you get, you know, an attorney, and you get, you know, an attorney that comes over here, he explained it to all of us, why that petition was also worth nothing, and the attorney words towards you guys in minis everything, then, you know, then we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rudy. Sean.
Could you tell me how many people signed that petition?
You remember the, the original petition that stopped the hearings back in July?
Yes.
Well, the minimum was 50. It was well over that. I don't know the, the total number. I believe it was in the neighborhood of 100.
112, I think.
I'll take the word for it.
Okay, so, so you started off saying the Butters got this petition together. There's only a couple of Butters that signed that petition. The other people that signed that petition were all around town, Far Hill, Partridge Lake, you name it. They weren't just that neighborhood. There's very few people from that neighborhood.
You're correct.
And I want to point out something else. There's a lawyer in town that called the employer of two of these people that signed this petition, who tried to get them fired for signing this petition. I just want everybody to know that. I don't, I think that's pretty dirty. Okay, now let's go. How long, you been in Littleton?
How long have I been in Littleton? Owned my property for 20 years, been here 19.
Okay. So you don't remember when there was one stoplight in town?
No.
No. It was nice back then. One stoplight. Paolo would go out, Don would knock, you'd get out there, direct traffic. Try doing that today, he'd get run over. All right. Let's take a drive up through the industrial park, Rudy. Every place up there is looking for help. The new tender, coin company, you name it, everybody's looking for help. Pofidos, the auto parts store in town, everybody's looking for help. Why do we need more business in town? And, you know, another 1,500 people in town, where are they going to live? Are there 1,500 house locks that people are going to come in and build houses on? Do we want 1,500 more people coming up and down Main Street? It takes, what, 20 minutes to go to, from Apthorke to Lowe's now? It's ridiculous. And you're trying to turn these back streets into no, no through trucking? How are you supposed to make a living when it takes you an hour to move material across town to back, when it used to take you 20 minutes? I think it's a big mistake to increase the size of this town, more, more jobs, and the jobs in the industrial park are not high-paying jobs. I've talked to several people that work at these jobs, that they're not, they're not making as much money as I pay my employees.
Thank you. We've got another speaker or two, but we have run out of time, and I'm not going to stop there. But for those of you that came for the 5:30 session on the right of way, hang in there because we're going to finish this up and then go into that. But we will not be able to start it on time at 5:30. It's already passed that. Just don't give up hope, but stick around.
Point of order. I believe there is an RSA, and I can't quote it. The council may be able to, but I think there is an RSA that says if you have a public hearing, it has to go, even if you've said it's over at 5:30, it has to go and tell everyone here who's had a chance.
That's what I just said.
Okay, I can't, sorry, I can't hear you back here. Sorry, I apologize.
The next person on the list is Joe Evans.
Thank you. Could you play up the other screening? Where it says this sale carries no cost to town, I think that premise is erroneous. If there was a developer, maybe we could have a leg to stand on for selling it for a dollar. But I would think the overall cost, it does cost to the town because you're going to lose the tax revenue. And I have no problem selling that land for fair market value. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Joe. I saw Tony Lockwood come in after the sign-up sheet had been collected. Tony, did you have anything to say?
Well, I'm, I'm somewhere. I've got a question. I thought the meeting started at 5:30. What was the 5 o'clock meeting?
5 o'clock meeting is to sell the land, the 5:30 meeting is the right of way.
All right, so I have questions regarding the sale of land. As a citizen, not as, anything else, but help me understand, and I, we sell the land for a dollar. Now, back a couple of years ago, there was a warrant article giving the selectmen the ability to sell the land, correct? In that warrant article, was it specific that you, was it known that we were going to sell that land to LIDC?
Let me, let me help you out here.
Yeah.
This is a public input session.
Okay, so, but I got.
So we're gathering input and opinions from you.
So at 5:30, I can ask questions?
No. You can ask questions.
Because I, I do have.
It's not a question and answer.
Okay. Well, I have been, let me give you my input. Okay? I won't ask questions. I'm concerned about the process. I'm concerned about, in the past, we've always sold it for a dollar, then they sell it to whoever, whether it be the coin company, then they develop it. I'm not quite sure how that process is. And that concerns me, because if, I'm sure there are other people out there that have that same concern. And if we keep doing things the way we used to do them, we will find ourselves in the situation where we are today. We have high taxes, we have infrastructure slowly falling apart at a rapid rate, the schools, whatnot, the roads. And so I'm kind of concerned about that business model. And moving forward, if we had the opportunity for the town to sell land, I would think that we'd want fair market value for it. So that's my input on that piece. According to Mr. Dodge mentioned, employment, there's a thing called natural unemployment in the flow. You all familiar with the bell curve? Okay, at some point, you cross over that. At some point, our wages won't be attractive to outside businesses coming in, and that should be concerned. This has happened in the past. Historically, this will happen again. You can't stop. I'm not against what they're trying to accomplish. I just have questions about moving forward in the future that we, maybe we want to look at this a little bit differently. And yes, sort of that, that phrase, "No cost to the town," there is cost to the town. There's loss of opportunity, there's loss of tax base. We hear that, you know, well, we don't have any plans for it right now, or 30 years down the road, we need tax base now. What are you doing now to increase our tax base? And that goes to the selectmen, LIDC, and everyone here in this room. We have to look at it as a collective, as a whole. We can't continue going down the same road that we always have. We need to all work together and come up with solutions, be creative outside the box, and work together to come up with a way that we can make the old Hickers building attractive. We can make unemployment. It would be nice for people to be able to afford to live in this town. You can't afford to live in this town if you work here. I mean, most of us, you know, we're, we're struggling, or we travel outside of town. I would love to say I can live and work in this town. I don't. I live here. And wages at 15 bucks an hour, that's $3,000 a year, the average household income in the state of New Hampshire under poverty, around 35, 40, all you're doing is keeping them at that line. How do we get above that line? Which then would increase our tax base, would increase the spending downtown, and would increase revenue. We only need to move the needle just a little bit, folks, to make a big difference. And I think right here is part of the process. That's my input. I'll have questions later.
Thank you, Tony. Is there anyone here that has not spoken that would like to speak? Is there anyone here who would like to speak again, or fresh in? Would you like the town attorney to explain Article, is that 12 or 17?
Would you like the town attorney to write that?
Would you like the town attorney to explain why we're here?
Yes.
Yes. That's why we're here. Either first one get turned around. That's what we want to know.
Look, I, I think that it would be helpful to explain the different legal views. And the reason why I think that is because the selectmen don't, the selectmen don't want you to leave here feeling more frustrated than you have to with the process, because the process is frustrating. It is frustrating. And because there are different legal opinions between the attorney for the petitioners and myself, that has created a situation like it usually does when we just can't agree, where folks are not understanding what the other legal position is. So I'm going to explain to you what my legal position is. The select board will make a decision as to what legal position they're going to go with when they get around to considering how they want to move forward. Yes, the selectmen usually go with the town attorney, but, but, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't tell them what to do, I tell them what I think, and then they make those decisions. In 2000, and you, you all know the facts of this much better than I do, so if I screw it up, tell me. In 2014, this warrant article, without the corrective reference to the RSA, was presented to the voters. The town had not yet adopted the provisions of RSA 4114A. As you all know, under 4114A, the town says, "Selectmen, you can go ahead and sell town property. You don't have to come back to town meeting anymore, but you have to follow the procedures that are set up in the statute. The two public hearings, planning board, and the conservation commission weigh in on it." This was before that was adopted. I interpret this article as saying, "Selectmen, you need our authority to sell these properties. We're giving you that authority to do that, but you have to do the same procedures that you would do if we had adopted 4114A. You have to have two public hearings, you have to have the planning board, and you have to have the conservation commission weigh in on it." In my view, the sale of the land, not the right-of-way, but the sale of the land, is outside of the statute of 4114A. It's not part of it. And that's why, in my view, the petition doesn't stop the process of selling the land, because the selectman's authority to sell the land doesn't come under 14, under 4114A. It comes under that warrant article, it comes under the town vote. So that's how I look at it. And my understanding from the letter that the attorney for the petitioners wrote was, in, in her view, in, in her view, this article was done under 1441A. I'm sorry, I always switch the letter, the numbers, 4114A, and therefore, the petition stops that. So that's where we have that disagreement. As far as the right-of-way goes, the right-of-way wasn't included in there. The right-of-way was proposed by the selectmen after the town adopted 4114A. So that means it comes under RSA 4114A. So a petition asking that the sale or the conveyance of the right-of-way be done by town meeting would stop that process, and it would go to town meeting. I have a concern about the sufficiency of the petition, and my concern is that the paragraph that's above all the signatures that everybody read doesn't mention the right-of-way. It just mentions the land. And so I am concerned that that's not valid, because the people who signed the petition weren't top thinking about the right-of-way. They were only dealing with the sale of the land. So, so, so that's what my concern is. So if you have information that would, I didn't ask you about this part. Sorry. If you have information about anything else that was handed to people when they were asked to sign it, then, then that might be helpful, but, but I can tell you that when, when you look at a petition and you think about what's included, the whole thing is about notice, what did people think they were doing when they signed it? And this says, "We, the undersigned voters, petition the town of Littleton to require the sale of lot tax, lot 9946, be placed on the town warrant under RSA 4114A." There's nothing in there about the right-of-way. And that, that's my concern about the sufficiency of this to stop the selectmen's process of going forward under 14, under 4114A to do the, the right-of-way. So, so, I guess I'm saying, even though, you know, if you have information that addresses that concern, I'm always open to learning things to change what my concerns or my questions are.
So are you the town's lawyer?
Yes, I am. Jay Y. Wong, the town's lawyer.
Okay, so Tom's lawyer is saying the opposite.
Yeah.
So what, do we need a judge now?
Hopefully not.
So is that what it could lead up to?
Could lead to that.
Okay.
Hopefully not. No one likes to throw the stuff to the judge, and God knows what you got.
The question, what you're bringing up, it's two different things. We're doing two different public hearings. That petition was for the sale of land. That was the only thing that public hearing covered, was the sale of land. It did not cover the, the.
And you're right, you're right. I never should, I shouldn't have brought that.
So that petition has nothing to do with the, the right-of-way. It's a sale of the land only, because we went to a public hearing for the sale of land. So what you're saying right now is invalid. It's your saying that the only reason you held it up, because it doesn't talk about the, the right-of-way.
No, that's all right.
You just said that.
I'm sorry.
Didn't she just say that? That's why she held it up?
No, no.
She said.
My interpretation of this petition is that it only deals with the sale of the land.
Right.
Yes. And because the sale of the land goes under Article 17 and not the statute, I don't think it's effective to stop the sale of the land. That's what I'm saying.
Excuse me, miss. Do you know particularly, you know, Article 17 over there, do they specify, before people vote, right? They don't have to be precise with, what did the Article 17 say? What did they say over there that they sell it for a dollar? You think 100 people, they would have bought, they would have bought yes? If they would have sold that property for a dollar, they give it their okay to the town to sell it for a dollar, you think 170 people, they would have bought yes? It's, it's wrong. And, you know, I understand that when somebody goes to vote, a citizen's over there and vote, it's not too real. He's going to understand everything that he says yes or no. Now, you're not telling me, do this over here? What's the difference in comparing what you read and that one over there? They got a lot of things in there, right? Or am I wrong? If I'm wrong, you correct me, because I'm always a lawyer.
I, I can't address what people may have thought when they were voting. What I can address is that article authorizes the selectmen to sell the property. It doesn't put any restrictions of any kind as to who it goes to or how much it goes for. If, if the voters were concerned about that, they had the option to either vote for it or to vote against it. You may have gone into it and said, "I don't know how much money that is, I'm not voting for that." I, I understand your concerns. I only deal with the legal aspect. From the legal aspect, in looking at that article, what it says is, "We're authorizing them to sell it."
But from the legal aspect, you got no right to tell them to sell them, because whatever, it's written on Article 17. It's wrong. It's not the truth. We're going from the judge. The judge want to know what the hell you know. It's written on Article 17. It's not written that it's the two gentlemen, they can sell the property for a dollar. It's written, you know. Otherwise, the people, 870 people, you know, would have bought yes for a dollar. They would, they would have bought, you know. But.
Thank you, Rudy. I'm going to say something, because Sean touched on it, and he almost got there. Because of the opinions, you see that this position we, the selectmen, are in, will it end up, how do you resolve the two different opinions? And it may well be court. But think for a minute, once we had the legal opinion, anybody could sue the town for not exercising the opinion and having these hearings. Could have gone either way. So here we are, over again, redundant, taking all your time, by the way, ours too, to try to resolve the issue. Will it resolve it? I mean, whatever we decide... I mean, whatever we decide, someone can object and carry it further. Well, we're trying to go through the process, trying to do it properly. Mary sent her hand up to log.
Yeah. Two things. I can understand that the town had not voted to accept the RSA, or for the selectmen to use the RSA 4114. That was in 2016, correct? And this was voted on in 2014. But, the thing is, that it states in this article that it will be, I can't read it that way, that they will use RSA 20, or 40, whatever it is, RSA 4114A. So there's already a law in existence that they stated, that they're going to go by that. And there is a petition, there is the allowance of a petition in RSA 4114A, even if the people of Littleton haven't given them the authority, the state legislated, the two houses have. So, you know, just a thought there. Then, but anyway, I have to thank you guys, because I'm reading what I spoke of in the first hearing, was, I was disappointed that the meeting was at 4:30. So I have to thank you for having it at 5 o'clock. Thank you. The other thing is, oh, is my, was I going to, oh! Are we still hearing information or thoughts on your voting on this later on? Are you, are you hearing testimony?
This whole thing.
Okay.
Public input.
Okay. I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring up, because I might think of something else for the next one, bring up what I said. And I had asked if all of you, you three, had walked this property, or if you would. I would, I would really encourage it. Maybe not after this rainy weather, because you'll need boots for it again. But, and whether you have thought of what, there's all the crushed glass there, that is an income for this town. And they use it in the roadways. If you have thought of where that's going to be relocated, because that is on the property, that and the burned pile, whether you have considered where that's going to go, because it's going to have to be on town property. Those are the only two things. I had another one, but, oh, yes, I would like to really read something to you. I'm taking a Tom alt here. Because you say this is kind of messy, this whole proceeding, and we have to do it over again, and it takes time.
The Conservation Committee's report is already been.
I know, but what I'm, where is it? Oh, I had one of the quotes, this by one of the Kennedys, and I'm going to probably misquote it. Democracy is messy. And it is messy for us to rehash this probably, but it is important for us to do that. And it, I find it encouraging that this many people are here, that you're televising it, and that you're interested in, that you're volunteering your time, essentially, and that all of us are, that, you know, this is the process, and it's important that we have it. It is not, you know, wasted time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Kim, you have it.
I just want to make sure that we're, this isn't about being against LIDC. LIDC is a boon to the town. I live half a mile up the road from Industrial Road, and I have no problem with all the great businesses that are there. It's, I purchased my house knowing that. I have massive dishes behind me with DirecTV. You know, that's not the issue here. So I don't, I think, you know, LIDC feels like they need to justify that great job they do, but that's not what we're saying. We're looking at this particular parcel. And yes, it's, it's leading to Lot 107, which is zoned rural, which is all the Abutters View and many other residents. I'm not in Abutter. But yes, that was Article 2 that we fought last March, because we needed to protect that mountain. I look at it every day, and I just think, "Oh, my God, can you imagine if 140,000 square foot factory was, just raised the whole ridgeline? And what that would look like for so many people? Not to mention what that would do to the environment and the, and the mountain itself, and the runoff, and the wetlands." So I'm very proud that we got that vote passed so that we saved that mountain. Now, I'm really hoping that this, this gift to LIDC doesn't lead to trying to rezone that property, because it's, we've proven from an appraisal, that Tom Clardy paid a lot of money for, to find out that, yes, our property values would decrease by 25%. Do you really want to do that to your constituents? Do you really, you're supposed to protect our property values. And so that's why giving this land, 42 acres, which really, the Conservation Commission has deemed is, is really not usable. So why, when LIDC is saying that they have 200 acres of land, but that most of it is unusable, why would they want more unusable land? I say, "We sell it to the highest bidder, get the 80,000 for it, or whatever we can, and turn it into, conserve it, turn it into the flume, and have it as a destination, a tourist attraction." I don't know if you saw this weekend, the pumpkin festival, how fabulous it's becoming, with thousands of people here. There was no parking in Littleton. It was fabulous. These people were carried. And we just want this place to stay as beautiful as it can. So that would be a great idea, is to think logically and compassionately. And, you know, to get into a legal battle over this would just confirm that you're not listening to the residents, and that you're doing anything you can just to, just to justify your decision to sell the land for a dollar.
You do realize we can get into a legal battle by either decision.
Well, you could, how, no, I mean, if you could, you would just let it go to vote, but you're not letting it go to ballot, and let the voters decide whether or not to sell it for a dollar. So I don't see, I mean, this whole thing does not have to happen. You're, I believe it would be, you know, the town lawyer against the petitioner's lawyer. That doesn't have to happen. And why make people, residents who've come to build a life here, why make them spend money like that? It's senseless. Thank you.
I don't think it's senseless that we're here doing this. But thank you for your input. Joey, Adrian.
Thank you for your troubles, but just a clarification from the town attorney. If the petition had included the right-of-way, then we wouldn't be here tonight, is that what you're saying? Since there were two separate issues, but the petition only addressed the sale of the land and not the right-of-way, that's why we're sitting here?
I think my opinion would have been the same, it just would have, the petition would not apply to the sale of the land, but would apply to the right-of-way.
So if the petition included against the, granting a right-of-way and against the sale of the land, your position still would have been the same as it is now, or would that?
And the reason for that is, is that I believe that the, the selectman's authority for selling the land arises out of the 2014 Warren article. And I believe their authority for the easement arises out of RSA, the authority the town gave them last year under RSA 4114A. And the legal effect of a petition under RSA 4114A only comes into play when the selectman's authority to sell comes out of RSA 4114A. And the Warren article, that was the town, that was the town saying they could sell, it wasn't the selectmen exercising their authority under the statute. They didn't have any authority to that.
I respect the position you're in, but you can understand why some people think that smells a little bit.
Yes, I doubt. Jim?
Can we go back a slot?
Pardon?
Can we go back a slot, sort of, sorry? Looking at Article 17, it's kind of a tool in your toolbox, as far as giving you the ability to sell property, without having to go to town meeting. So with that, I think comes, you want to make some good decisions with it, because if you find yourself in making a bad decision, that article could be voted out later on, and then you might not have that vote.
It's already been back and forth three or four times.
Yeah, yeah. But I think the idea and the spirit behind it was to give you the ability to move on things when the time was right, so you didn't have to do it. So I guess my recommendation is just make sure you have all the information so you're making a good decision. So if this isn't drawn out, and that you don't use that tool in your toolbox, or what it's.
Thank you, Jim. Chad?
Just a few points of clarification since the last time I talked. Just a reminder that the parcel of land that your transfer station currently sits on is 43.66 acres. I think that's ample room to find a place to put crushed grass, crushed glass, and a burn pit. Also, that LIDC is an all-volunteer board. We don't have, you know, lavish salaries and vehicles that we get from selling the land to businesses. What we use that for is for studies, for matching grants, for, you know, further developing the lots that we do own to be able to sell to businesses that pay taxes and bring employees to town. Just, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Johnny, you hit your hand up?
Yeah, I did. And this might throw a whole wrench into it, but it sounds like we all want to get to yes. Selectmen would like to look good, the voters would like to good, the landowners would look good, LIDC, you're already looking good. So why don't you do this? And I might be wrong, I might have to leave the room. Why don't you do a land swap, and why don't LIDC take Lot 107, and either sell it back to the town for a dollar, or the conservation easement, make it a conservation easement? That way, we keep our beautiful land, which makes sense, it's not buildable or usable, it's in people's sight of view. And then the lot that we're talking about, later on with the lot adjustment, that makes sense to put businesses there. So why don't you guys get together and figure out how to get to that? I mean, it can be dumb. What are you really losing for the next 30 years? You're not going to build that land for 30 years. Why not make it, preserve it for the next 30 years, 100 years? And that way, it puts some people at ease, because obviously there's tension in town with the petitions and the voting. We could end that all tonight, or we could start the process today. That's that little tick I'm talking about. Only takes a little tick. Everyone gives a little bit, we could all win. We preserve the real estate value, we preserve the forest, we preserve the animals. At the same time, we ensure that that one law, it's going to happen that way anyway, we can build on that law that you're talking about right now. And we don't have to go to court. Because no one wants to go to court, because that's just going to cost us time and money. And we don't have that. We do not have money set aside for lawyer fees. I'm sure we don't. And if we do, we could spend it someplace else, like on the schools. That's all.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you.
Kevin, did you get your hand up there?
You know, we all, we all work hard to make this town great, and I personally volunteer in many ways. I'm a library trustee, and I volunteer for the River District Commission. And I just think that we all, I agree with Tony, we all need to work together.
I think they're both great ideas. And if you could put something together before these hearings are over, that'd be wonderful. Mary?
Just one question, and this I'd forgotten before. On the Article 17 from 2014, it doesn't mention the easement. Am I correct?
That's the whole reason this, we're here. The whole reason we're here is because the original article forgot the easement.
Okay. If it doesn't, if it doesn't give you the authority to do anything, right, that's what you're doing here. But you keep pointing that it does give you the authority to sell that piece of property, and the attorney has said that they have to be together on the petition, but it's not even on this article. Easement. So they are two separate. That's what I understand.
Very simply, what happened was, the article passed by what you saw.
Right, right.
It came time to transfer the land.
Right.
Couldn't do it without the right-of-way.
Or the right-of-way, right now.
Anyone else?
Just, well, based on this, you know, how the town voted for the selectmen to sell the land, the word is "sell," not "give," and a $1 is a gift, or else you guys trade your cars, and I'd love to buy your car off you for a dollar before you traded it in. You know, it's not really selling. But, and I liked what Tony just said about maybe swapping the land, you know, it'll show good faith on most sides. Like, we want development, but we don't want it on our mountain costs and all our views, and we need a full land.
Wonderful idea. Is there any other public input?
Give us one week, it's not a lot of time to discuss these things, you see how it, I mean.
We're in a process.
Yeah. This whole process came out of, who has a couple days ago, we thought about.
And there are time constraints on the process. The hearings have to be a certain number of days apart, the decision has to be made within a certain number of days of the last hearing.
Rush decisions are not the best decision, too. A rushed decision's not always the best decision.
I agree. We're under some constraints here. Jim?
That's why the petitioner should have been contacted when his petition was being put aside, and you knew that this was, I mean, I just think it was sneaky not to let them know that, you know, these 100 people that were against this weren't being contacted. We're just lucky we're here.
It was sneaky not to let you know that we asked for legal opinion?
No, no, I can appreciate that you would do whatever you wanted, you know, to be able to do this, but, you know, what happens to 112 people that sign the petition, it just doesn't matter? I mean, doesn't that mean anything to the selectmen to know that you have quite a substantial amount of people that are against this? Or that are at least concerned and want to know more?
Why would you think you don't care to be concerned?
Well, because we found out about the meeting by, I haven't, you know.
I'm a speaker.
Yeah. If you're not watching all the time, when the meetings are going on, or what's happening.
Well, I believe this, I know the selectmen, it's their legal responsibility in the posting of the meetings and the notice.
Oh, no, you'll, yeah, of course you do. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that if a petition, I don't know what, I guess it's, I'm just saying that it's common courtesy to the petitioner.
We should have called everybody, so we haven't moved.
Not, not the 112 people, the petitioner. And just say, you know, "I'm sorry, because you accepted the petition, and then you rejected it." And so he didn't know anything about, at least I don't think you contacted him.
Thank you.
I don't know what the procedure is.
Is there any other further public input on the hearing dealing with the sale of the land?
Sean, just, how do you come up with a decision? The three of you just sit there and come up with a decision whether to sell it or not?
We will make that decision as posted at the November 27th, I believe it is, selectmen's meeting, which is an open meeting.
Okay.
We will discuss it in front of whoever is here and in the camera.
Okay, so, so how many have to vote on it? Three of you?
Three.
So that'd be 3-0?
No, it could be 2-1.
It could be 2-1. Okay, so I think there's a little bit of conflict, because are you still on the board for LIDC?
I am not.
As of when?
I don't know if that's pertinent, but I am not on the board, and I'm not a member.
But you were at one time.
Yeah.
When did you stop being on the board?
I'm not on the board.
You can't tell us when you resigned?
I can tell you, I don't think it's any of your business, when I resign.
Thank you.
Are any of the other selectmen board members, or have they had one?
They are not currently, I don't know if they ever have been.
But there's one more meeting before the November 27th, right?
Yes, another public hearing on November 14th. Yes. Another public hearing on November 14th. Is there any other public input on the land portion of the sale? Hearing not, closed that portion of the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. And those that want to stay for the hearing on the right-of-way, I suppose I better read it, huh? "The town of Littleton Board of Slade proposes to exchange easements with the Littleton Industrial Development Corporation over the town's parcel of land with the transfer station tax map 99 lot 17." LIDC currently owns the parcel identified as map 102 lot 7, which includes a right-of-way over Old Daily Farm Road. This road has changed location on portions of lot 9917, based on a plan approved by the planning board in 2014. The select board proposes to give LIDC a right-of-way over the new road location in exchange for LIDC releasing any claim to the old easement on the old road location. These conveyances carry no cost to the town." I'm not going to go down the list. I'm just going to take you as I see your hands, if you have a public input for this right-of-way transfer. Jim?
Is there a copy of the plan that was presented at the 2014?
This is the right-of-way that came after 2014. So this is why this is a separate issue from 2014. This is under the select board's new authority of 4114A. Whereas the last one, last public hearing was under the Article 17 from 2014.
So we just don't have a copy?
I don't, I wasn't here. I don't know what plan would have been available, like the language and...
I'm just reading. "This road has changed locations on a portion of lot 9917, based on plan approved." So...
Doesn't that show the older than new?
Oh, yeah. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm asking.
Right there.
Yeah. So the old, if you look on your, the...
Can you kind of point, point a few lines for us, if you have money?
Do that?
Yeah.
This solid yellow represents the existing easement.
Okay. Whatever those buildings, what are, what's each building there?
That's the transfer station. That's the burn pile. That's the...
Glass.
Glass. That's coinkern. This kind of shaded yellow represents the location of the proposed easement. It's mostly coincident, except for this little stretch right here.
Is there any further public input? Rob?
I'm sorry, I have a question. If, if you change that easement, even if the land doesn't sell, you change that easement, you still got to move the burn pit and the glass pile?
Correct.
Regardless of what you, you got to move that.
Correct.
Just clarification.
Sean?
Why is it being changed? Just so you have to move the burn pit and glass pile, or...
I don't know.
Better way to do this.
What is, is there a, what's the current easement? Is that shown?
Yeah, the current easement is a solid yellow. And the proposed easement is the, kind of the shaded yellow. It's a little difficult to see there. So it's mostly coincident, but that little stretch that goes through the...
So the solid yellow is what you want to do now? The current is the...
No, the solid yellow is what's now.
Okay.
The shaded...
I see it.
That goes through the burn, the glass pile.
It's almost like the opposite of what it should be. If you're going to give somebody a right-of-way, wouldn't you want to do it so it doesn't cost you money to have to move stuff that's already existing?
Move it, thank.
Be honest with you, we were wondering the same thing. We can't remember why they proposed change. I want to try to find that out.
Okay, you can answer that.
I, I, I don't know.
It was proposed by LIDC.
Yeah, but I don't know. I'm not sure the purpose. I'm not sure why.
Think it was important enough to stay for this meeting?
That's part of our, we got to find out. It's a good question.
Yeah, I would suspect, well, no, by the 14th, when we have a next session of this.
Yeah, after discussing information, we need to know why.
Yeah, what's the cost to the town?
It would cost a tax payer money to remove the...
It would, unless there was a condition on the transfer, wouldn't it?
Maybe it would, right? Maybe it would. So the easement part occurs even before the line of the property that's for sale, that you want to sell.
The change in easement.
The change in the easement.
Correct.
Because the property you're looking to sell actually is up in here.
Down here.
Down there.
It's right here.
This is the one. It's hard to see.
So, but this has absolutely nothing to do with this. I don't see what they, I don't see what they...
It leads to each other.
Their existing easement is listed in solid, so it already is there. There's already a list, recorded easement that comes through the town lot to the potential transfer. The new easement, basically, would be swapping for a new easement to straighten the road out.
I understand that. But you could potentially go ahead and sell this property and keep that same easement.
That's why there's two separate issues.
There's two hearings.
That's right.
That's where I become very confused with what she said. She tied them both together in the one petition. That's why I'm really confused.
I don't think that's what she said. I don't want to speak to her.
I think I did a bad job.
You sure did.
I did a bad job explaining that. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I was thinking when I did that. What I was thinking about was that people were concerned about both the sale of the land and about the easement. And I knew that people were concerned about the petition. And in my mind, there are, the petition raised issues for both the sale of the land and, and the easement. And so I went ahead and explained my concerns about the easement, and I shouldn't have done that.
Okay.
Because it confused the two things, and it was, it didn't help at all.
It didn't, because...
No, it didn't.
Because the people that sign a petition really couldn't care less about easement.
It's the sale of the land.
The petition has to do with the sale of land. Has nothing to do with the easement.
Yep.
Okay.
Sean?
I, I asked this question the last time we were talking about this, several months ago. Is there a deed that we can look at to see what this, this right-of-way is? Is it, is it recorded? And when was it recorded? Or is this something that just popped up a few years ago, or...
Yeah. So there is a deed. It's recorded April 2nd, 1956, Grafton County Register Deeds Book 571, page 1431. The town purchased this lot with the easement, known as Old Daily Road, for $25,000 in '56.
And what was the easement for?
To include the purchase of that lot that's being proposed to be sold to LIDC.
Okay, was there a timeline on it, or could it be transferred in the future? Does it say anything about that?
I don't have it in front of me, but it can be. It was purchased for the purpose of gravel and a new, I was, to see, for acquisition of Newtown dump site and acquisition of sand and gravel purposes from Raymond J. Utter and Rosalie Utter.
I think we're talking about the land that we're trying to sell for $1. That was the gravel. The top of the hill is all red.
The easement included the right-of-way, that's why I'm making that. I mean, the...
The sale included that right-of-way. The old, the existing right-of-way.
So it must serve the back lot, where that yellow line touches the transmission line down by the way. That must have been the purpose, to give that lot access off the industrial property.
Which also...
Old Daily Farm.
Any other input on the right-of-way question? It's being done?
I do have one. Contamination, any contamination related to the burn?
Is there any?
I would just make sure there isn't, before we build it over there.
Make some of those concerns, I don't mean to be putting words in your mouth, but Rudy touched on it. Bruce had a lot of it all over at the other hearing. That's where you do conditions.
Yeah.
That's one way of addressing those problems. I shouldn't put words in your mouth, but the point is, we're aware of it. Thank you. Any other public input? I'm going to close this hearing, and these will be reconvened on the 14th of November. Thank you all for your time and effort.